I've got 706, so we'll call it to order. You start the roll call. I'm gonna go around the room. Blake?
You're muted Blake.
I'm sorry. Blake Moore, I'm in Huntington Woods.
Thank you Sheldon.
Sheldon Cohen, Huntington Woods.
Thank you Rick.
Rick Pollan in Huntington Woods.
Thank you Jill Plamper.
Jill Plamper in Florida.
Thank you David.
David Schwartz Huntington Woods.
Thank you and Jeff?
Huntington Woods Jeff Jenks.
Thank you Hank Jill just sent me Jill Ingber just sent me a text that she's in the waiting room stuck.
Just got on and I will she just showed up so she's in. And then also there's another person that I've just let in.
Okay great Jill Ingber can you just say where you are and that you're here?
Yeah I'm so sorry I'm a few minutes late guys Jill Ingber I'm in Huntington Woods.
No worries we just started and this is Mike Wright and I'm also in Huntington Woods. I don't think I missed anybody. First thing we're looking for today is approval of tonight's agenda.
I approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Second Jeff Jenks.
Thank you so Hank we got first by Jill Plamper second by Jeff Jenks go around the room Blake?
I agree I approve.
Sheldon?
I agree.
Rick?
I agree.
David?
Agree.
Jill Ingber?
Agree.
I agree as well. Thank you. Approval of minutes are we deferring again?
We we are only because right now the person that we got has made it almost all the way through all the backups ZBA minutes in historic district commission. And your minutes was gonna be last simply because she couldn't get them all done before this meeting. And she was gonna have December because there's no December meeting so you would be 100% caught up with January so. But we need one more deferral for her.
We need a motion to defer the meeting.
The January meeting.
Which which months are we looking at?
Well you're looking at November October and September.
Move to defer September October and November meeting minute approval for just until December meeting.
I'm sorry Jill it's gonna be January.
I'm sorry move to defer September October and November meeting minutes until January.
Jill? Second?
Second.
Okay Blake?
Agreed.
Sheldon?
Yeah fine.
Rick?
Agree.
Jeff?
Uh I agree.
I agree as well motion passes?
I agree too.
You forgot Jill Ingber.
Sorry. Oh I thought Jill Ingber.
Alright.
Tell you this Brady Bunch thing is a little keeps moving around on me sorry.
It is a little difficult.
If everybody would stay put it'd be great.
I don't know why that happens but it does.
Okay first up we have matter of site plan approval for an addition to the Jarzuski? How did I do on that?
Jarzuski.
Jarzuski butchered it sorry about that residents at 13116 Wales apologies on the pronunciation. Who is gonna kick this off Hank?
Uh this they would present as to what they did or I believe their designer was also on. So it's they would present first and then I would go in after that.
Okay. Would you guys like to start or do you have your designer architect on?
Michelle's on mute.
Is that Rick? Can you hear me?
Yeah Rick. Rick or Michelle we need one of you to go ahead and present your project please.
Rick I think you're on oh there you go.
He had it there he goes.
Okay I I'd be happy to. So my name is Rick Swanquist I'm with Main Street Design Bill. Right now we are proposing a second floor addition for the Jarzuski residents. What we are proposing at this current time is to construct a second floor addition over an existing first floor addition on the home. As it stands that addition will include a master bathroom two walk-in closets and a common hallway in between those rooms. We are going to be constructing this addition with like materials with an exterior siding that will match up to the garage. And we will be then tying into an existing roof line on the current home. Great thank you. Hank anything to add?
Yes let me just pop this up here. Can everybody see that? Can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay okay so this is what we're looking at is an addition to go out and it's it's really kind of a simple thing. What they're doing is is that they're going out the back and then if you take a look at the site plan or the plan that you see here which is a rendering I'll get to later. But you can kind of get the gist of what it is that they're doing. On the side of the house you can see where if you can follow my cursor. This is the existing house which is brick and that's a sided addition on the second floor so they will not be carrying the brick up. It could be carried up there's a couple things that you run into with that one is a brick and grout match. If you don't hit the brick and grout match it looks worse. They've used a transitional siding is to cover that. But there is a definite transition between the brick and the siding so it's there's a little bit left out of the side. The rear elevation has plenty of glass has the siding. Meets in the corner of the window which the big window would meet egress. And then it would come down over the top of the roof on the bottom. This is the view from the other side elevation that we have. This is their plan here you can see that the outside window that the outside closets which don't have windows in the side. Are arranged so that the windows are in the back. So it lends itself to the more fenestration from the back but it has nothing but siding on the side. That's the choice from them from having the closets on the outside with this. This is the rendering here and you can get an idea of what it is proportionally and spatially it's a rear quarter view of the house. The siding here they're using trim boards here the boards appear to be accented in a different color to kind of differentiate from it. And again Rick certainly feel free to correct me if there's anything that I'm saying that's not what you drew. We'll go from that so other than that that's really all it is basically. If you take a look and let me get this real quick right here. I've got two mouses going so this is a little bit different. Basically what you're looking at is the height it's two stories 26.83. But that matches the existing peak. So with the hip roof it's harder to do that and to drop it just a half a foot in order to meet the peak would be probably less it would change the the roof line to the point where it would make things even more awkward with this it's a contiguous roof. For the front yard it's existing no change there's no change to the side yards. And there's no change to the rear yard as it's already over existing space. It meets the lot coverage it's a big sized lot and it has over it has only 14.7%. And the house is 2530 in square feet and allowed is 2700 so they meet that. The lot is actually 79 by 154 and all the lots on there are slightly irregular. The lot size that they have is over 12,000 square feet so it's really substantial when it comes to that so. In the house will now be brick and siding. If you have any other questions I'm happy to answer them or let me just stop the screen share on this. If you have questions I I'm happy to answer them I'm sure Rick could answer it or perhaps the Jarzuski's could as well.
Great thanks Hank. We'll go ahead and open up for public participation. Anybody from the public wishing to speak if you could just state your name and address and we'll go ahead and take your comments.
My name is Judy Walters I'm the house directly to the west of Michelle and David 13124 Wales. And I have no objection whatsoever everything the addition looks great and it's fine with me.
Great thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hi this is Erin Walker I'm 13113 Victoria I live directly north of the house and it looks like an excellent addition and I'm excited to see how the construction goes. No objections.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hi my name is Eric Hosner I live at 13108 Wales it's directly the house directly east. Went through a very similar addition and full support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi this is Corey Starr I live two houses west of the Jarzuski's and we have
Thank you.
What am I?
Anyone else? Okay not seeing anyone.
Yes one more.
Sorry?
Yes this is Danielle Livernoy. I live at 12950 Wales and we are also in full support.
Thank you so much. Okay closed public participation and we'll start around the room Blake you're up.
It it it's fine I like I think it's perfectly acceptable I think it lacks some of the fenestration I would hope to see. This is a tricky one because we get into this a little bit every time we have a meeting and I think it potentially I think it meets all of the criteria so it's a it's a bit of a complicated discussion.
Sorry thanks Blake Sheldon?
Yeah. I also have some reservations obviously I'd like to see a window or something on on the sides of the house. But I that's not a major issue for me I think it's I think it's fine as it is. I recognize those are closets but nevertheless the the interior use is not supposed to be something that we take into consideration and overall you know if if the if the material were brick uniform all the way out to the end I don't think we'd say a thing about it it's changing materials it it kind of highlights that particular aspect so I have no problem with supporting the approval of the plan.
Thanks Sheldon. Rick?
Yeah my only reservation on it is the back window and Hank I think you said that that's for egress. It's just the size that one large window doesn't fit in with anything else.
I think it just it has to be that size in order to allow for egress while the other windows it 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 does bump itself out there it puts itself out there there's no doubt Rick. But there's a mandated size that they have to have in order to have a you know in order to have that space. But if you take a look at it let me see if I can real quick. One quick second. So it's in the hallway and that was like a direct from the best from the master bedroom so they were counting that as their egress for the master bedroom. So I'm assuming that's what you were doing Rick. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it even though it's like out of kilter they have to have it. So the only other option would be to make the other windows a little bit proportionally larger.
It it just seems out of proportion with even other egress windows that we've we've approved before.
Rick can you let us know what that what the size of that window is I just wonder if we're we're seeing this because I I agree with Rick it almost looks like a door wall size up there.
Here's here's part of the problem too guys just so you're aware it's showing that it's a casement window.
As we stand right now that window size is calling for a 60 inch width and a 31 I'm sorry a 51 inch height. Which then split in half for casement purposes again would allow for that egress. Okay thank you. Rick anything else to add or any questions?
But I believe that that's bigger than what's required for egress. And if it's if it's 60 by 60 a double casement I think that's a little bit bigger than what what is required.
Rick is that mold in the middle?
Yes sir it is.
Okay so it's really half the size. So you really when you're taking a look at it you've got three by what what did you say it was 51 inches tall?
Yes sir.
Yeah and then that's something that the building official like when we go it wouldn't be the the purview of the planning commission. But if it was of an issue you could say that it would be you could perhaps if it was a sticking point for you say that it would conform to the smaller egress. The smallest egress size allowable by code. That's up to that's up to you and that's up to a discussion with this if that was a sticking point for people. But there but because you're looking at it and it's a very large window what really is the egress has to meet is half of that. So the other half is balancing that out but it absolutely is a large window there's no doubt about it.
It is large by design it's at the end of the hallway. And we really want to be able to look out into our yard and have a ability maybe of one day yes it's also I think it's the same size as like French doors would be you know if if there was an upstairs deck or something that you could walk out onto um which was something we considered in the early stages you know that wasn't you know that really big window at the end of the hallway.
Okay I think I'm following you so it's not sized to a minimum egress requirement it's sized for a potential swap to a door?
Correct.
Basically the header will be the same size and they would swap it out and cut down. If that's what they wanted to do with it.
So I'm not okay with the way that that window sized right now and Hank you can correct me if I'm wrong if I'm wrong but I believe the clear opening for an egress window is 42 inches tall by 20 inches wide.
A minimum of 20 inches wide.
Yeah clear clear space.
Yep.
So I'd like to see a window that's more appropriately sized that fits in with the rest of the windows. And I I'm not gonna dictate what that size window is unless one of the other board members wants to. But I can't I won't approve it until we adjust that window size.
May I may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
As we're looking at that elevation what we have here is a standard sized opening for a French door. It is oversized for egress if we were to adjust the height on that window to be consistent with the other windows that are on the rear elevation there would that be something that would be more appropriate?
Hold on let me flip through the set.
So Rick just so we understand you're saying the height would change would would flip to be consistent with the other one two three four windows in the house but the width would remain the same and it would remain a casement is that right? Yes sir. Thanks.
What what's the height of the other windows?
Right now the height of the other windows is 36 inches.
Yeah I don't know that no you're gonna be the same width. Also that window height of the of the bigger window is also gonna have to drop because your header size. Your header heights are not gonna line up.
And if you need 20 by 40 you're not gonna get it with a 36 inch window.
Yeah that's part of part of the issue with this is is that our building officials gonna decide what size window they actually have to have you're approving something that is what you feel to be aesthetically correct and meets the standards and the guidelines. The building official will determine if it has to change an inch or you know a few inches one way or another. But we don't as a planning commission we don't have the authority to circumvent or change any code regulations so it can be bigger it can't be smaller.
And we can't insist upon anything that is less than 40 inches high anyway.
Well you need to you can word this and I think to kind of take Rick's concerns into into consideration here. That you can word it to say or the minimum the minimum allowable egress consistent with the style of windows on the backside. You know making it the same height and then let leave that a little bit up in the air. But if that was the intent and like Rick was concerned about that also there has to be another thing which the building office is gonna look at is depending on how tall that is from the floor. You're gonna end up having to have you know a different type of glass you're gonna end up having to have tempered glass if it's too close to the floor line. So there's a couple different things there's also another consideration that they could build this and they could build it with the header wider. So that whatever window they decided to put there in the future the header's already in place. So they could take out more wall space and the walls the header that's king studs the cripples would all be in place so they could just simply take the space out below. And any of the electrical could be run over the top so they wouldn't have to run into that.
That was actually a comment I was gonna make I was gonna ask do you have the height because I can't from what I'm looking at I can't quite tell to do that to put in the header now?
Well they have it there now for the window this window is gonna be the same for the door.
Yeah yeah. That would be a nice way to split the difference maybe.
That way they could still have their future and there would be little to no more cost than removing you know what it is there so they'd have to take it and you know in order to install the door wall it would be a little bit different. Ideally the way that it's drawn correct me if I'm wrong Rick is just so window pops out you take the saws I'll cut it to the floor and pop the new door in that's simplified of course but that's kind of what was
Are we doing what we say we don't want to do which is design on the fly?
To an extent but I mean what we're looking at here is a window size so I mean that can be adjusted with motion.
To answer your question Hank yes that is the intention behind it. Okay Rick Rick anything else floor is still yours?
Uh no.
Okay here Jill Plamper we are on to you.
So I look at this and I have a quick question so you're using vinyl siding?
That's correct.
Okay and I assume the garage is vinyl siding?
Yes ma'am.
So I look at the side of that and see that big chunk of vinyl siding and I have the same concerns that Blake and Sheldon both voiced that it's that you have this change from brick to vinyl you know outlined by some trim and it's a big expanse of just plain vinyl with nothing in it and I understand it that you're putting closets in there but we are not supposed to be thinking about what's inside but more of what does it look like from the outside and I am disturbed by these two twin chunks of vinyl siding on either side of this house. I understand what you're doing with the windows in the back and your thought process of putting a French door in I I do think it looks awkward. I don't know if the answer is to shrink the big giant window or to expand the smaller windows to make it look more proportional. I don't know but I am also just like I said my main concern is I'm disturbed by the the outline chunks of vinyl on either side of the house I find that to be disturbing. So those are my comments not thrilled about that.
Jill? Jill Ingber?
Yeah I actually I can appreciate the use of the vinyl based on you know having difficulty matching the brick and grout and I think I get that I mean I think you see houses where they try to match it and it doesn't and it looks worse it almost just stands out and looks I don't know I so the vinyl itself doesn't bother me I'm also not bothered by the size of the window in the back if anything I think it sort of matches the window the big expansive windows on the first floor in the back. If anything I I think if I'm understanding you know the rest of the complaints maybe making the other windows a little bit bigger would have would adjust that visually would make that more aesthetically pleasing but I actually think it looks great and I don't it it doesn't bother me.
Thank you Jill. David?
Um alright I think six years on the planning commission this is the first time where we've had a window that was too big. I personally don't care that much but I do think the the vinyl on the side I don't love it. I don't love the vinyl in general I think you know hardy board or something would be better. Obviously still give you the breakup from and risk of the brick matching that you're trying to avoid. But you know still a better material there and obviously I see that the window would be difficult to add so I wouldn't strongly advocate for it but it would help. Otherwise I'm fine.
Great thank you David. Jeff?
I don't really like vinyl but it's mainly at the back. The windows don't bother me because they're at the back and I don't think there's anything wrong with trying to see the yard and the garden we'll get a nicer yard that way. I support it I don't really have a solution for the vinyl on the side hardy plank to me is just as bad. But I would move to approve this as it is. And it has it has the support of the neighbors.
Thanks Jeff. Um this I agree this this is kind of a tough one to me yeah I guess I'll start with a
I'm sorry just for a point of order Jeff did you make a motion?
No because I think everyone should discuss it.
Okay I just wanted to make sure because I thought you said you moved okay so then your your intent is not to make a motion Mike can finish and then you
You know I I think the lack of fenestration on the sides while we're not supposed to take the interior floor plan into consideration and get the the struggle of of putting multiple windows in the closet and I appreciate that you did put one on the back. Can you run me through one more time about the intention of turning that 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 casement window into a door wall what would that be in future state? Of course.
Well and Rick feel free to jump in for the more technical part but I guess the there's still a fair amount of remaining first floor that we would be putting I think they call it a rubber roof on with railings and then basically there'd be a double a double door there a French door you know to walk out into onto that area and you know cost wise it didn't fit right now but that's forward looking that's where we're what we're thinking.
So so essentially a balcony? Right okay. Yeah thank you I just I I did I wasn't super clear on the on the first part um you know I guess that said I I would love to see that happen as part of this project I get that cost constraints might prevent that so I that said I don't have that big of an issue with the casement. Uh, I get that cost constraints might prevent that. Uh, so I that said, I don't have that big of an issue with the casement. I have a huge issue with the vinyl though, regardless of what the uh, the garage is. Uh, that would make a lot more sense with hardy board. I I would probably approve this with hardy board. I don't know that I would move to approve it. Uh, with with the vinyl as is. Um, that's sort of my my big point, you know, and and again, back to the fenestration. I would love it if there was some more on the sides, but I I could probably live with it without.
If if I may jump in at that point here, um, we have had a very low inventory of reclaimed brick in and around the Detroit area. Uh, there are not as many homes that are being torn down and providing that reclaimed brick. I do fear that especially with this home, it would be a very difficult brick match in order to come up with something that would look as good. Uh, I I think that we would struggle with a brick match on it and a mortar match on it. And for whatever it's worth, I think that that would um, be a big challenge ahead of us if we were to go that route with it.
Sorry, I um, I wouldn't expect brick. I I get it. I understand the hardy board is is what I would probably suggest over over the vinyl. I think that's a pretty boilerplate answer for the planning commission. Anytime we see either aluminum or vinyl siding here is uh, we we'd much rather see us switch switch to hardy board. It's gonna last, it's gonna look better and you can get the same color and get whatever color you want out of it. So uh, that's it, I'm done. So I guess we would be looking for some type of motion on the floor.
I'll move to approve the plan as presented with the um, window to be sized for the minimum size. What did you say, Sam? Minimum that's consistent with the other windows um, based upon code requirement. That's the only reservation I would have.
It was seconded by Jill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Uh, actually, no, I lied. Uh, go around for make this easy for Hank.
Again, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Blake.
Yeah, I agree with Shell. I think that's a good compromise.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh, Rick Paul and yay.
Jill Clamper?
Yay.
Uh, David?
Yay.
Jeff?
Uh, yes.
Uh, and I'll go ahead and jump on the bandwagon, yay. Congratulations.
I get to vote too. Yes.
Sheldon, I'm sorry.
My vote, yes, my motion.
Oh, yeah, right. It's your motion. Do you need to vote on a motion?
Yeah, I do. I vote, yay.
Alright, and Jill Ingber. The person with the second?
I seconded it, but I will vote yay as well.
Okay. I typically make the wild assumption that the person that made the motion and seconded it are gonna say yay, but
No, not necessarily. Second can be just to make sure that it's brought before for a vote.
For discussion.
Yeah, I think the guy who makes the motion, person who makes the motion has to support it. Um, I I don't think that's true, the second.
That is correct. So Mr. Chair, then this project is approved as presented with the change to the window in the back.
Looks that way.
Hey, Rick, um, perhaps you and I can have a conversation tomorrow about what that size is. You give it the building inspector. And you can come up with what the size is and then the plans could be adjusted for that and then we can proceed to permit.
Sounds real good. Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is a matter of site plan approval for an addition to the Landau residence at eight nine two six Lincoln. Who will be presenting for that?
Excuse me, Mike, before we move on, I'm actively involved in this project and I'm gonna recuse myself on the the Landaus.
Okay, great. Thanks, Blake. You can mute yourself and enjoy the show. Uh, who's gonna be presenting? Is that you, Mark?
I'm gonna present for them, yes.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Mark Rosenblatt Huntington Home Building Company. Um, I am hoping to be working with Ryan and Margot Landau. They are wanting to expand their home because their family is expanding. And so this home is new to them. And we're gonna propose to make this change to add a master suite to the existing home, which sort of doesn't really have a master suite. It has a couple of bedrooms. Um, and it just doesn't work for them. We are proposing to push over to the east and go over the existing garage, which is attached presently. I hope we have put enough windows in there. I think that we have. Um, we plan to use a siding that's a little bit different than the city usually sees. And the reason we're doing that is because we're we're wanting to match the existing home. Right now, the existing home, uh, all the second floor structure has this vertical. It's it's approximately a one by six. It's almost like a beadboard. Attached vertically and then painted. Um, so I believe it's a cedar, actually, a painted cedar. And that would be the plan that we would would go with. So if you can see on the prints or if you drove by or both, the anything on the second floor has this vertical beadboard type siding as well as all of the accents on the main floor. Um, underneath the window next to the garage and on the far west side of the house has all of this. So that's why we put that kind of siding on there. Um, figuring you guys might have some questions about that. But that is the reason why to keep it consistent with the rest of the house. I believe that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Uh, Hank?
Yes, sir. Hold on here just a second. Okay, uh, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so basically here what you have is where my cursor is, is the area where the addition is going over. This area and there's other areas around here would show the type of siding that Mr. Rosenblatt has articulated. This right here is an aerial view of the house. This area here is the actual front of the lot. This is the side of the lot, even though the house faces Lincoln. I did confirm with the city attorney after this that the project will not need a variance because you're not exceeding the actual scope of the house and you're not making the uh, nonconformity any worse. As it sits right now, the house is five point three three uh, would be a variance that what you needed for the uh, was what you have for the rear yard and the house sits back from that. So we do not need a rear yard variance, which this house was originally projected to get. So and that would mean that this area over here would be acceptable for the construction. But that's kind of the aerial view of that. Now, here's the aerial overlay that you have with this. Again, here's the Wyoming side, here's the Lincoln side. The area of construction is over here. The dotted line that Mr. Danaher has shown in through here show where the house would be and it shows a ten foot to the rear yard setback. So, but you're not going over or not even coming close to the edge of the garage. So this will be stepped in. This, if you take a look at it over here, shows the floor plan for this and it shows uh, Mr. Rosenblatt's um, comments that look, this is how this is gonna turn into an actual master suite for the second floor. And it also shows the first floor being over here down Wyoming with a hip roof. So the house was designed to totally face off of Lincoln. So what he's trying to do with this, and again, uh, Mr. Danaher is with us, as is Mr. Rosenblatt, they can feel free to jump in. What they were looking to do was this is what you have now, this is what you're going to get. The roof height will match the existing roof height. This type of siding will mimic the siding that you have over on the gable end and the existing trim areas over here. So that's why they're using that type of of siding. Uh, just to be clear and Mr. Rosenblatt can confirm, even though it kind of looks like it, that is not T one eleven siding. So I, why, you know, that that's probably an important concern for some people. So that's kind of what they're doing from this side. This is a little closer version of what it is. And this comes into the roof. So this comes out and this is like your area over here where this is built up. And this comes in over the garage and it sits back from the side of the garage as you could see. This is the view from the other side, which is the backyard, which is the technical side yard, but this is the backyard. So what you used to look at is right here, what you will be looking at is right here. And uh, they were good enough to provide a photo of that exact area up here so you can see the area that's going to be filled in. This is a little closer up version of what that's gonna look like. So you can see how it ties into the existing roof line, the windows and the eve lines that they have there. So this is also the technical side or it's actually a side yard of the house, but it's a technical rear yard. So this is what the neighbor from behind will be looking at. This part here is what's there now and this part here is what they will be seeing. And again, the windows have been dimensioned. Um, and if there's any other questions, uh, this just kind of gives you the close up view for that. Um, so you can see how everything cuts into the roof. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'm sure that Mr. Danaher and Mr. Rosenblatt would be happy to answer them. Right now, to go through the technical aspects of it, um, the front yard is thirty-one feet, required twenty-five. The height is two stories, no change. Um, the side yards, again, um, you know, we explained the difference between that. It's a minimum five, total fourteen, and proposed is nineteen uh, point five eight on one side, thirty-eight point nine one total. And the variance required is uh, you know, is gonna be nine, there's not gonna be a variance required. So that goes off the table. They're well under their lot coverage. Uh, they're allowed twenty-five hundred square feet and they're just over two thousand. And the house size is approximately four hundred square feet under what the maximum house size is permitted. So they've done with, they've been within their criteria for that. The lot size is eighty-three hundred and forty square feet. Um, if you took a look at what I provided for you, uh, their actual uh, neighbor is on Huntington and the other neighbor is on Wyoming. So there's a difference in size lots. There is not one of these three lots that's the same size. Um, one ranges from six thousand square feet, eighty-three forty for the subject property and eighty-two eighty for the lot on Huntington, even though that's a very irregular configuration. So again, having said that, if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, as I'm sure Mr. Rosenblatt and Mr. Danaher are as well.
And Hank, uh, just a a quick question before we start. Uh, Mark or Andy, just to clarify, the material uh, the siding material that's being used on the is the same material as the current peaks, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's our intention is to to be a vertical tongue and groove style siding, which is very typical in in period houses. Not many in probably our city. Um, but you see a lot of houses doing this now in kind of like a simulated way. Um, I know T one eleven was sort of this nemesis of the eighties. Um, but there was also reasons people use that is because they were trying to repeat this kind of vertical um, natural siding that we used to see um, back in fifties and sixties. But um, that is the intent, um, to be a natural material to tie in with the rest of the house. Um, this house doesn't really have a style. It has both hip roofs and gable roofs. But our intention was to sort of repeat the gable roof of the main ridge line. So um, really to kind of blend into the overall um, main height of this building or this this existing house.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Roof materials would match all other roof materials. Um, the windows would be shown like we're we're providing today, which are actually a very similar sized window of the of the lower level windows. So we're we're trying to be contextual. We're trying to be um, matching, which I know the um, the commission likes to see, so.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. Uh, okay, go around. I'm sorry, we're gonna open up for public participation first. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Uh, just please state your name and address for record. Hearing none, we will close public participation and start with Sheldon.
Okay, um, I I guess my question is it um, kind of addressed to Mark, what what do you project as the time period for completion of this project?
Um, it's gonna be a few months, depending on where we can start, depending on how much weather delay we hit. But three to four months.
Yeah, the homeowners have a baby that's on the way, so they're really trying to work around this kind of deadline and
We're gonna be flying.
We're gonna be planning to go quick, yeah.
Okay, um, I I have no problem with the design. I think it's uh, I think it's fine. And if if checked, if Hank has checked out the the question of the uh, need for the variance, um, I'll rely on that. I assume that that the the question, the variance came up because you're you're would would it applied? It's an attached garage. It would have applied anyway if they were going from scratch, or wouldn't it?
If it was, you're right. I mean, the houses that sits right now couldn't have been built in this in this configuration without uh, variances. But I did run the variance issue by the city attorney and after this went to press, if you will. Um, I got my call back and uh, we do not need to do that.
Because it's not exacerbating.
It's not exacerbating the problem.
Approachment, okay. Got it. Alright, I don't have any problem with the design.
And Sheldon, Rick?
No issues.
Great, thank you. Uh, Jill Clamper?
Um, I understand what you're trying to do. I found your plans to be a little bit different from the pictures that are shown. Um, specifically in the back, the the um, exist, the way you've drawn the existing seems to be like the the main peak in the back rests directly on the first floor. When in reality, it's actually pulled back on the roof a little bit. So it was difficult for me to to kind of reconcile where you have the the new peak, the new roof line coming in to the top peak. But I'm looking from the back, um, the new roof line is coming in directly to the peak on the back, but then to the to the right of it, it drops down. You've got multiple like shifts in roof. So it's like it's coming across and then it hits that peak and then it drops down and goes across. And then from the from the uh, east elevation, you've got multiple pitches on the roof. So you've got your your steep peak of the bungalow-ish and then you've got the one over the garage, which is a much, much shallower. It just doesn't seem all that harmonious to me. I don't have problems with your siding. I don't have problems with your windows. Um, I just, as I look at it, it just looks a little I think the word to me is uneven or maybe a little messy. It it could just be the way you've rendered it on your prints, but I found it to be a little odd. Um, am I wrong in how you've rendered your prints? I mean, maybe it's my interpretation is off.
I mean, if you look at the existing for our elevation above the new on all the pages, you can see how this this roof, these roof lines work. Um, like we mentioned earlier, the the rear or the side yard, which appears to be side yard, but it's really the rear, which faces the eastern neighbor. Um, the garage sits forward of that. So you're always gonna look at things in elevations and depth. So you're seeing the gable ended roof that's further back, almost at a like a third point at point of the house, which very likely could have been the original design of this house. And this house has received a couple additions. The previous addition was the first time a hip roof was introduced to this house. Um, somehow it was approved. Um, probably shouldn't have been. Um, this house should have probably all been gabled roofs like it is today. And there's a series of smaller dormers, which we're trying to help sort of balance that project to the west. So um, there's really no defined architecture to this house. It's not a bungalow. It's not a ranch. Um, I'm not really sure what we call it, but um, the our intent was to try to play with the overall main architecture of the house and try to to keep it within line of that.
Again, I just, and and I think that you're right. I think there is no defined architecture on it, which is like I said, what makes it look a little bit messy or a little bit, you know, add here, add here, add here, this roof line's this, this roof line's different. It just looks a little messy to me. Um, however, if the if the people that are paying you to do this are happy with it, you know, that's great. I don't have
But don't you agree that the existing house is But don't you agree that the existing house is just as messy and we have actually solved this weird?
I don't know if you've solved anything, but I'm hoping you haven't made it messier. But on the whole, you know, like I said, if they're happy with it, then it's it's fine, but I I I'm not sure how, you know, I'm not going to suggest how to fix it. I'm just saying that it it just, there's multiple roof lines and it just seems a little bit messy to me, but that's just from my aesthetic point of view. If they're happy with it, I will not vote against it.
Well, interestingly, this house is covered by trees. And actually, Hank, you have a pretty good picture of this house because it's hard to photograph any other time other than in the fall right now.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, if you want me to find it and put it up, I can.
No, you had it as one of your very first images. So I guess where I'm going with that is that this house, you know, three quarters of the year is is literally covered in trees, not to suggest that we should do something differently, but I think the aesthetics of the house are are really at the first floor leveling around. The roof really kind of goes away in the tree lines of all the existing trees around, and we're going to maintain every tree that we have. So.
And and I walk past it all the time. And I, like I said, I don't have a problem with it. And I I like, as I go past it, I always say, wow, that's like really like lot of like covered landscaping. It just, um there's a couple houses in the neighborhood where I I walk past them and I think, wow, is that designed by committee? And we're like parts added here and there at different times without a thought to the cohesiveness, but that's kind of how I feel about this one. But like I said, if if the client that you have is happy with the end result, then I will not vote against it. So I'm done.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Let's see here, Jill Inber.
Yeah, I I think that I I kind of agree that the existing house was already like just the product of other additions and stuff made it somewhat. I don't know. I don't know what the word is messy or choppy, but I don't think that the proposed plan makes that any worse. I think if anything it 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 is cohesive to me and I appreciate the I appreciate that you're using materials to keep it consistent. And I think I I think it looks good. I mean, I think I think it'll blend in nicely and accomplish the homeowner's intent.
Great. Thanks, Joe. David.
I'm fine with it. No issues.
Thank you. Jeff.
I'm uncomfortable with the vertical siding. Just changes the line of the view. But I I can't suggest and how to improve that. And I think meet the master bedroom needs of the events.
Thanks, Jeff. Blake is recused, so I think I got everybody.
Except you.
Yeah, so me, I I have no problems with it. I think you guys did a good job of taking a house that has had a few different issues and and sort of smoothing things out. I I get the, I was really questioning the vertical siding before I heard from you guys. So I think it's probably the right thing to do. I have no issues. So I guess we, with that said, you, we are looking for motion.
So move. Support.
Thank you, Jeff.
Who was the support on that? I'm sorry, Jeff Mu made the motion. Who supported it?
We don't have a second yet.
Okay.
A second.
David's second. We'll go around the room. Rick.
Rick Paul and yay.
Sheldon.
Yay.
Jill Plamper.
Yay.
Sorry, Jill Inber.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
And Jeff made the motion. I will also say yay.
Yay.
We're good. I think we're good, Hank.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Next up is matter of receiving the solar energy report, additional materials and proposed ordinance for environmental advisory committee. We kind of talked about this before. I don't think there's a motion needed here, just a receipt of the stuff you put in the packet.
Yeah, um, basically, Mr. Chair, what's happened here is that based on some of the concerns and questions of the planning commission at the last meeting with the solar. It has, you asked for, you wanted to see the other ordinances and some more information. And also there was a draft ordinance that's attached to this. This will not happen until a meeting in January where you discuss it. But right now, it'll be on the planning commission agenda item for discussion in January. And then if you want to move forward, then you'll set a formal hearing for it. And then we'll have that notice, you know, put in the proper notice for that. But it won't be till January, but there was quite an amount of other communities ordinances that was asked for, and we believe that you've been provided with them. This is just simply for you to file away and take a look at before the January meeting. And that would be all we would have on that, Mr. Chair. So.
Yeah, Hank, can I, or Mr. Chairman, can I ask Hank a question? It it seems, because I actually read this stuff.
Yeah.
That Birmingham doesn't have their ordinance as part of the zoning ordinance. That what what difference does that placement make?
If it's not part of the zoning ordinance, it's not appealable to the zoning board of appeals. So if something was denied and it was and it was in the zoning ordinance, that they could appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. If it was something where it's not in the zoning ordinance and the zoning board of appeals is not the avenue of appeal for this. So some communities choose to keep it in their zoning ordinance. If we're going to have it, my recommendation would be that it's in the zoning ordinance. And then also at that point in time, one, the planning commission retains jurisdiction over it, as does the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you. I've got about twenty seven other questions, but that's kind of the way to review by the.
Yeah, it would be, it would be our hope that you do take a look at this. And then again, if you have questions, either email them or, you know, sign on to the meeting or whatever. And then, you know, we'll discuss it in January.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments on the receipt of the energy report? Okay, moving on. I think this one's kind of the same deal, Hank. Matter of receiving information on the Woodward corridor plan, correct?
That is correct. It's informational in nature, but we always want to provide you with what we have and what the latest and greatest is. So what we've done is we've put this in the plan. The city manager has written a memo on it that you should have. And there's also a link that was included in there. If you would like, I'm happy to send you the link in a fashion that you can actually click it and review it. And it's the report for the MOD action plan. So if you would like, I'm happy to do that for all of you so that you can take a look at it. It's pretty extensive. But having said that, you should just simply, you know, I mean, this is like informational, but if you have questions on it, we definitely would encourage you to ask.
Yeah, I I looked at it, Hank, and it doesn't look like as far as directly to Huntington Woods is concerned. You know, that eleven mile Woodward intersection, not much is happening. Maybe a more defined last walk. Did I miss anything there?
No, not really. They've been talking about this in various forms and incarnations for years. The Woodward Avenue Action Association is taking, I mean, there's been several groups and entities that have taken a look at this. And I think what's going to happen with it is a lot of this is going to be driven by a, how much financing there is available for this. And then how it fits. But right now, we don't have anything before us that we can either approve or not approve. So this is kind of where we're at with this. And again, this report, as you have it in front of you, is informational in nature. Questions that you have, I would love to have them relayed back to either myself or to Amy Sullivan, the city manager. So that when, you know, that's convened or if there's any more questions or if there's any opportunities for us that we would have your input on it.
Okay, thanks. Sounds good. Any other comments on the Woodward corridor report?
Just that, Hank, I would like to see that if you could circulate.
I'm happy to send you the link.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next up is election of officers.
We have one more. We have the manager, I'm sorry, the manner of receiving the annual report.
Right, sorry. Lot of receiving this meeting.
We are receiving.
Uh, yeah, I read through that. It seemed pretty straightforward.
It is. There's a point of confusion in that the bottom of the page is numbered one, which would indicate that there's probably a point number two. And there's not. That is the, that's confirmed with the city manager who did did the report. So it automatically numbers the pages. So it kind of gives you the idea that there's more coming, but that's it.
Okay, that that looks very straight.
But Hank.
Yes.
The the only thing that was left from the master plan five years ago for follow up was one item. I think someone ought to look back at the master plan and see if there was more than one item in it. I can't believe that you've completed every other item on the list of unfinished.
I don't believe we did, but I I didn't write the report. So I'll tell you what I will do is I'm happy to discuss that with the city manager. And if she wants to amend the report, I'll do that. This is a copy that goes to the planning commission. The report will be submitted to the city commission as well. So I will make her available, I will make her aware of your comments and questions. And if there's any alterations to it, I'm sure you'll be getting another copy.
But please go back and look at the twenty fourteen plan. Because this then gets integrated into the new plan. If we've got issues that have been wiped out, they won't be dealt with again.
Well, we have to go back actually to the two thousand and eight master plan. And the two thousand and eight master plan, which was a huge undertaking, in fact, must best in state from for the plan at that point in time. So the two thousand and fifteen additions to it were two specific sections and to comply with state mandates like complete streets and that that we had to have. And I think what we're going to be looking at is a fairly comprehensive go through for the save, for the plan, because this is our chance. Every ten years, you redo the plan. Every five years, you take a look at it. And we took our look in two thousand and fifteen, and now we're looking to redo it. And as we do that, we might have some more input and the master plan and the planning commission itself will be able to weigh in on particular portions of that. That would be the point of this. So as it stands right now, I believe we're out for RFPs for planning consultant for it. And we'll see what happens when we start getting that information in. Nothing's going to happen until next year. But I will convey your concerns and your comments to the city manager tomorrow. And then we'll see if there's anything else that she would like to add. From the two thousand and fifteen plan, there probably is a very limited amount of things that have changed or from that. But from the two thousand and eight plan, there's going to be a few things that should be knocked off or that haven't been knocked off or lost.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, now we would proceed to the election of officers.
Okay.
I do want to point out a couple of things, and I probably, I was going to do this after, but I believe I'm going to do it now, just because some of these people may be considered for positions. So we have a large amount of people that are leaving the planning commission, and this is actually their last meeting. Barring some something where the city commission has asked somebody to stay or we don't fill all our vacancies, and I don't have that information yet. But at this point in time, unfortunately, we will be saying goodbye to Sheldon, who has been on just about every planning and zoning. When he's not on planning, he's on zoning and Sheldon has been invaluable part of both the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. Couldn't be happier to have him and work and work with him. But Sheldon's going to be taking pretty much at least a year off on this before we can try to talk him back into coming on one of our boards and commission. And Sheldon, as always, it's it's a pleasure, and I just want to thank you. Also, at this point in time.
Thank you, Hank. Your checks in the mail.
Thanks. It's a Starbucks card, right? But actually, then I want to move on to Jill Plamper, whose insight and design sense has been second to none on this planning commission. And her energies have been spent in in helping to improve this and our designs, I believe, are better because of having Jill on the commission. And Jill, again, I want to thank you very, very much for your time on the planning commission. It's been great. It's been fun. You've also spent time, I believe, on the historic district commission. So I mean, Jill has also made the rounds on the boards and commissions. Volunteerism runs really strong on this, on the planning commission, and I appreciate both of you so far. We also have to say unfortunately goodbye to Mr. Schwartz. And David, thank you again so much. It's been great. Your insight's been fabulous. Your concerns are well founded. Your addition to the planning commission and your insight and discussions has been great. Absolutely ecstatic to have had you on here and hope we can talk you into something in the near future. So.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. And last but not least, every year we change a city commission liaison and voting member for this. Jeff, I just want to thank you very much. Being this and the city commission is double duty. It's another meeting a month that you have to take. And as everybody knows, the planning commission takes some time. And really appreciate you donating yours to the planning commission. And having said that, I believe it's Jules, I believe is the next up, although I'm not a hundred percent sure yet, but I believe that it is. Just if I'm going on the sheet that I have. But again, the the city commission has to let us know for sure. But I do know this, Jeff, your insight in the meetings has been great. Your comments have been on point. And we really, really thank you for taking the time to make all of these meetings. And as well as your role on the city commission. So thank you. Mr. Chairman, as that pertains to you, those four people would not be good candidates for office.
Does this mean I finally got my get out of jail free card?
Yeah, until we can talk into something else.
Yeah, I would I would echo everything Hank said. You guys have all been awesome. Thank you so much, Jeff, for the past year and Sheldon, Jill and David for the last couple. Appreciate everything. It's been awesome.
That being said, Mr. Chair, you've got to elect some officers.
So I would like to nominate our chair to remain as our chair if he is so willing and as the liaison to the ZBA. I don't know.
Why don't we do them one at a time if it's the pleasure of the chair? So.
Fair enough. So I would nominate Mr. Michael Wright to continue as chair of the planning commission.
I would second that.
Okay, you have to ask if there's any other nominations?
Right, since it's Hank, I'm sorry, this is, I think, my first run through this. Do we, is it like a motion?
You you need a motion, but you also need to ask if there's any other nominations.
Okay, any other nominations on the table? Okay.
Well, and you need a vote.
Okay, so I guess we need a, we need a vote around the room. And and everybody on the commission currently is still eligible to vote this year.
That is correct.
All right, we'll go around the room. Sheldon.
No.
Rick.
Yay.
Jill Plamper.
I'm sorry, I lost, I lost focus for a second. What are we voting on?
Re-electing.
Yeah, I'm like right for.
Oh, I am all about Mike staying on.
Sheldon wants me out, so. Jill Inber proposed, so I assume she's in. David?
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you, Blake.
Yay.
Jeff.
Yay.
Thank you. Sheldon will have words later.
I know where you live.
All right, yeah, I would accept. Thank you, everybody. Uh, Hank, anything else needed there?
Yes, you knew, no, not for that office, but you need your vice chair.
Okay, um, vice chairperson, I would, uh, is currently Rick, if I'm not mistaken. And I would nominate Rick to stay in that seat.
I'd second.
Thank you, Jill. Uh, any other nominees? Okay, we'll go around again. Sheldon.
Yay.
Uh, does Rick get to vote for himself?
Absolutely.
Rick. Jill Plamper.
Yay.
Jill Inber.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Blake.
Yay.
Jeff.
Yay.
Thank you. Rick's sticking with us. Uh, zoning board liaison.
Currently your zoning board liaison, as you're aware, Mike is yourself. Um, the planning commission can nominate Mike again, or they can nominate anybody else that's going to be here next year.
I nominate Mike as remaining zoning board liaison.
Thank you, Jill.
I second that.
Thank you, Blake. Uh, Sheldon.
Are there any other nominations?
I'm sorry, I screwed this up. The ZBA liaison.
Okay.
Sheldon.
Okay, uh, I vote yay.
Thank you. Rick.
Yay.
Jill Plamper.
Yay.
Jill Inber.
Yay.
Is that Will or, uh, who's that behind me?
It's Luke. He also approves.
Thank you, Luke. David.
Uh, yay.
Thank you, Blake.
Yay.
Jeff.
Yay.
Thank you. I will also stick around in that seat. Uh, Hank, anything else on elections?
At this point in time, we have nothing else on election and the only thing you have left are public participation and I have nothing else for the planning commission.
I have a question. Um, I, I don't know if we ever had a to-do list this year. I don't know if we ever bothered with one. Things, things were kind of a mess. Um, but I would hope that we could, um, since I'm not going to be here, said that we could set some goals in terms of what we want to accomplish. Um, you, you know, and, and we used to prioritize them high, medium and low. I think twenty one, I'm sorry, twenty two is largely going to be consumed by the master plan.
Twenty one is.
Twenty one is?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're going to run in, you're going to run in, um, because you have the RFPs coming in, so we're going to get a late start on the master plan. Um, which means that perhaps at a meeting in January, you could set some goals and, and that. And, uh, Sheldon, I would encourage you to come back as public and certainly you have an input on that. Um, but the other thing is, is that the master plan is going to take precedence and for those of you that have been through a master planning process before. Um, I actually, Jeff can tell you that it's, it's a, quite a time consuming thing. And, uh, so having, having a list may be great and you should have one. Um, with the understanding that the highest priority is going to be to complete the master plan.
Yeah, I was there last time. And maybe when it was amended too, I don't remember.
Yeah, and I think part of the thing too is that there are times when you might have a couple of meetings a month, so it's asking a lot, so.
That's a good question. Hank, do we keep, uh, do we do as much as we can on the master plan in these meetings? And then add additional meetings as necessary?
Um, basically what happens is that when we get a consultant sorted out, typically the way that this goes is, is that. The scope of the work will be, is somewhat defined in the RFP, but you're going to have to do at least a cursory review of the entire master plan. So what happens at that point in time is that you'll take a look at it, you'll see areas that we might want to work on. There's some that you might want to revisit. There's some that might not be on the consultant list that we want to add to it. Um, basically, that's what's going to happen. You're going to get provided with it. Then the scope of work is going to be determined by how much has to be changed. If you have a section, say, that you're working on where you've accomplished ninety percent of the goals. Well, then those goals come off and new goals have to be added, so that's going to take some time. If you have goals where you have, you have to decide, are those goals still applicable to the city of Huntington Woods? And do we want to keep them on the list or do we want to change some things? For example, for housing issues, you may want to take a look at maybe increasing the lock coverage. To allow for more expansions, because if COVID takes things where you want to add, uh, more home occupations. You may want to loosen that up. You may want to allow more for a lot coverage in order to allow people to add a room to work from home on. These are things that you might want to talk about and discuss. Um, and they're not necessarily just those things, but those are a couple of things that maybe came to mind. And also how senior housing plays into that, because a lot of people are going to want first floor. Um, additions to their house, because for seniors, second floor additions don't always work. So, uh, and how things are treated, like are we treating elevators and lock coverage? Are we counting them? You know, there, there's a lot of things that could go through with this. Um, but as Sheldon will tell you, it's a lot of this makes for some spirited discussion along the way. And there's a good thought process and sometimes you run into it and it takes a little bit longer than you thought it would. But whatever it is, we're going to end up with hopefully another award-winning best in state master plan and, uh. But it's not done without your folks' work, so to that end, I'm thanking you in advance.
Assumed that Ben was our.
Thank you or a warning?
Ben is our planning consultant. Carlisle Warman is our planning consultant, but when we do this, it's a separate entity and it's not done. And it's not included in their normal scope of work. So typically we go out for an RFP. The master plans are. Um, not inexpensive. Uh, they're running, uh, tens of thousands of dollars. So having said that, um, we go out for an RFP and then the commission or the, the city manager will set up. I mean, I'm assuming I'll have conversations with her and then, uh, they'll go to the city commission and the city commission's going to decide who awards the contract.
Okay, Ben would potentially be in that running though, should he?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, certainly he'll get an RFP, uh, but there's going to be, there, there's, uh, um. A myriad of very qualified planning firms around and, um, as it is, you know, you want to. To be the best, you got to get the best and a lot of times that means having a clear understanding of what Huntington Woods is all about. So to not listen to what these other companies have to say would probably not be in our best interests as a community. So that's, that's what we're going to see. We're, we're going to hear from some people. Um, the city commission will make a, uh, decision. An educated decision based on knowing what they have, what they propose and, uh, what experience they have.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Uh, all right, so seeing no public to participate, we'll open and close that. And, uh, before we look for a motion to adjourn, everybody have a, a great holiday for whatever that looks like this season, I suppose.
Everybody stay healthy. See you in January. And again, thank you guys.
What, eight years?
Can we get a, uh, a motion?
Sorry.
Thank you, Jill Plamper, second.
I second.
Blake, all in favor? Sheldon?
No.
No? Rick? Jill Inber.
Yay.
Yay.
Blake.
Yay.
Jeff.
Yay.
Sheldon's going out with a bang.
What do you do if a motion to adjourn fails? I mean, that's, I just don't know what you do.
It's not looking like it failed, Shell.
We, we, we start up a Zoom happy hour and we just hang out here.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Take care now.
Hey Hank, I didn't even know this was my last meeting.